We'll call this meeting to order. We have a supervisor that wants to call in, Mr. McLaughlin, but we do have a quorum present. The chair was contacted by Supervisor McLaughlin and he stated that he would not be able to physically attend the board meeting today due to personal obligations. And he's in South Florida. He stated that he would like to participate remotely. I want to do a call for approval for Mr. McLaughlin's remote participation in the meeting. Mr. Skinner? To allow Mr. McLaughlin to participate remotely.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Chair's aye.
Mr. McLaughlin, are you on the line, sir?
I am.
All right. Please rise for the pledge, followed by Dr. Trampy, followed by the invocation by myself.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to have this day today. Please be with our citizens who are struggling and at a loss. Give them comfort. Cover them with your arms of grace and love. And, Lord, please be with our community, our fire rescue, police, military. Please keep them safe. And, Lord, please be with this board as we conduct this business tonight. Let the public have the quorum. Let us all accept and give understanding to each one's opinions and voice. Just thank you for all your love and everything that you do for us, Lord, in our lives. Amen.
Mr. Chairman?
One second. Do we have any Vietnam veterans out in the audience? If you will, if you would stand, I just wanted to acknowledge you for the, it is Vietnam Veterans Day, and I just wanted to say thank you for the service that you gave our country and appreciate it. I will, I'm gonna go ahead and, myself and Mr. Marshall will have to read a disclosure statement. I'm gonna go ahead and get that matter of business over with. I hereby disclose I have an interest in the county, in the budget transaction as a retired employee of the county. My disclosure is on file with the clerk and is available to the public for review. Mark and Amy, please record this disclosure in the minutes of this meeting as required by law.
All right, I'll go ahead with mine. I hereby disclose I have an interest in the budget transaction as an employee of the county. My disclosure is on file with the clerk and is available to the public for review. Mark and Amy, please record this disclosure in the minutes of this meeting as required by law.
All right, Ms. Taylor, for yours.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. First item of business would be the approval of your agenda. There is a bullpen item. It is a brief budget information presentation edited at the front of the agenda. And with that, ask consideration to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
All right, a motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Yakubowski. Mr. Skinner? Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Chair's aye.
And Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Sorry. Sorry, Mr. McLaughlin.
So that brings us to the presentation, Mr. Chairman. I have asked the chair and the board to step down to the reserved seats on the front row in order that we not project this presentation on your upper bodies.
Yes, sir.
We have just the lighting to accentuate the presentation, please. There are handouts circulated in the room, folks, and the purpose of this brief overview is to explain succinctly the information provided in the handout that has been distributed to you. Page one contains highlights of my recommended budget for FY 2019, also sets forth total operating and capital expenditures by fund and compares the FY 2018 budget to the adopted FY 2019 recommended budget. Page two shows budgeted expenditures by function, a forecast of general fund revenues and expenditures, components of the $126.7 million proposed transfer to the schools, and on the bottom, the exploded dollar bill that sets forth the average residential real estate tax bill and its use by budget function at the equalized tax rate, which is 81.46 cents. Page three sets forth changes in overall assessed values in the county with this year's reassessment. It includes a look back at the average residential tax bills and sets forth the 2018 advertised tax rates for this calendar year as compared to the calendar year 2017 adopted tax rates. Page four contains further information regarding comparative real estate tax rates for calendar year 2017, also personal property tax rates for calendar year 2017. Note that the right-hand column in the larger table on the right shows the effective rate, and that is the real comparison. The column next to it shows the assessment ratio. Not all localities assess our tax, real, personal property, at the 100 percent of the assessed value. The bottom is the pennies grid. This is breakdown by pennies of the 85 cent advertised tax rate by budget function. Page five shows local tax-supported expenditures for schools, fire and rescue, and the sheriff's office. These are our three top expenditures, top priority services in the county. The bottom is an alternative look at the budget breakdown where funding is shown here by function or by the reality of what different elements of our services cost. So whether it's IT or other related items, or whether the school's capital projects cost, for example, is included in the cost of education in this graph. So it's a functional breakout of cost. Page six is a comparison of local-based starting salaries and total compensation for teachers with a bachelor's degree. Page seven shows a comparison of local salaries paid above the bachelor's scale for teachers with advanced degrees. Page seven also shows a percent increase that the salary for each advanced degree varies from a bachelor's degree for Spotsylvania County teachers. Page eight shows a comparison of average teacher salaries in various Virginia localities. Note at the bottom of the page, this information is from the Virginia Department of Education, was provided to us by the school division. These averages do fluctuate due to turnover. So these average salaries are for all teachers in a county unit, a school division, and the overall average will fluctuate, particularly if there is retirement of older and higher-paid individuals and their replacement with new and lower-paid individuals. Bottom is the average salary for larger school districts in the Commonwealth. Page nine shows the number of vacancies for licensed positions in FY 17, that's our last year of available data, by school or other location. This is from the Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Page 10 is an exit survey data that indicates the reason employees left Spotsylvania County Public Schools last year. Again, this is school division data, also showing a result of a survey indicating employee intent for next year. Page 11 is a cost per student comparison for Stafford County and Spotsylvania County school operations. Pages 12 and 13 is a historical comparison of salary adjustments for the school division and for county staff. Finally, next steps in our budget process are outlined. Tonight is the budget public hearing. There is a work session scheduled for next Tuesday. The April 5th, there is not a meeting scheduled, but that's the earliest date for legal adoption of the budget in CIP. April 10th, there is a scheduled work session for discussion of the budget in the CIP. Either the CIP and the budget could be approved on that date, or they must necessarily be approved in order for us to get tax bills processed and out by April 12th. That is a close of the presentation. Thank you very much. If I may, while the board is getting settled, I'll run through the guidelines for public speakers for the budget public hearing. The budget public hearing is for the purpose of allowing members of the public to comment on any matter pertaining to the FY 2019 budget, the calendar year 2018 tax rates, and the draft FY 2019 to 2023 capital improvement plan. Prior to speaking, please sign up at the reception table located just inside the main entrance and with your name, address, and/or voting district. Listen for the announcement of your name and be ready to approach a microphone down at the front of the auditorium as the speaker before you is finishing. The time limit for speakers is three minutes. For a speaker representing a group, the time limit is five minutes, providing that other members of the group will not be speaking. However, the representative speaker may ask all group members who are in support of them to stand. Remarks should be addressed directly to the Board of Supervisors. Observe the timer, which is before me. The green light is to begin, the yellow light is to sum up, 30 seconds here, as in the board meeting room in Holbert Building, and red is to conclude. In fairness to others who wish to speak, please adhere to the time limit. The microphone will be shut off or a bell will sound when your time has expired. Please be respectful to the audience, to others, and to the board. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we are to the budget public hearing.
All right. I just, just real quick, just I wanted to thank everybody who's taken the time out of their busy days to come here and give us your voices. I just can't thank you enough. I know contrary to some, probably, I wish we had this entire place filled. But I thank you for coming out and being the voice and look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Please open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Most importantly, let's open the public hearing. Thank you, Amy. I didn't get your hint.
On the floor, there are two microphones. I'll call you up in order of threes, so if you can line up at the microphones, that'll help us get to each of you quickly. The first speaker is Dr. Gullickson, followed by Michelle Hedrick, followed by Rita Gerard.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you. It's government at its finest, I believe. I'm here really to give you a report card about how Germana is serving Spotsylvania County, and you have in front of you a little folder that has a PowerPoint, which I'll go through line by line. No, I will not. But I do call your attention to it for many reasons. First, because it tells you who from Spotsylvania County is attending our college, and you'll notice about 35 percent of our students are from Spotsylvania County and we're proud of it. You'll also notice that we serve a really pretty young population of Spotsylvania, and probably that's a really good thing because that indicates that parents are actually saving money by sending their students to Germana for less than $5,000 a year tuition before they go off to their other university education. You'll notice that, like most community colleges in the country, we are majority female from Spotsylvania County and we are majority female at Germana as well. I thought you'd be interested to know what the majors are, what your students are going into, and so the next few pages of that handout tells you exactly what Spotsylvania students are going into what majors. And it's interesting to note that most of the majors from Spotsylvania County are actually transfer students, which again fortifies the notion that students are coming to us for their two years. Hopefully, parents are saving money and then they're transferring on. It might interest you to know that research shows that students who start at Germana and finish at university, as providing they complete their Germana degree, actually have a greater success rate than students who begin their first freshman year at Germana. We also thought it might be interesting for you to know what majors people are going into in the career tech field, and you'll notice that the far biggest are health-related fields, and we have most of those programs, actually all of them, at Locust Grove. Many Spotsylvania students traveled to Locust Grove to get those classes. If you look at page seven, we're talking particularly about some of the services we're giving to the county, some of the services that we're providing along with Spotsylvania Schools. Dr. Baker, who is back there, and I work pretty closely together. We meet every two months with a big group, talking about how we can best serve our students, and they are our students. And the end result of that is we are developing specific pathways for Spotsylvania High School, all of the high school students and all the high schools, so that students can go seamlessly from maybe even their junior year into college-level courses in their senior year and then continue at Germana following that. It's an exciting partnership. It's new for us and we're thrilled to have it. We also serve about 330 dual-enrollment students. Gladys P. Todd Academy is specifically for students who are high-risk students but high-potential students, and we serve one of your high schools with that. We also provide a career coach. A career coach is somebody who sits in the high school, works with counselors in the high school, paid by Germana, and that person's job is to actually assist students regardless of where they want to go to college. So they help with the FAFSA, they help with college applications, and hopefully we end up with some of those students at Germana as well. We have a special person assigned to Spotsylvania Schools to work with them so that when Dr. Baker or any of his staff want to get ahold of Germana and want to get something resolved, there's one person they have to call, and that person is their concierge and takes on those issues until they're resolved. You'll also see on page nine, other training opportunities that we have provided to the county and to citizens in the county. We are very excited always to work at Spotsylvania County, and many of you supervisors I have met with, and I've always found you to be very receptive, and I appreciate them. We might even get a road out of it, I guess. We are also involved with just general community outreach. Spotsylvania County has always been very generous to Germana in almost its 50-year history, and that has allowed us to do outreach in areas that may not be always those that are obvious. For example, workforce development in off-site locations as well as chamber events, and when business is open, and sadly, when business is closed, Germana is there. Germana plans to expand its apprenticeship. We are in fact working with Go Virginia and applying for extended funds to help broaden apprenticeships in Spotsylvania Counties and other counties that we serve. You are probably more aware than I am even of the really workforce crisis we are in. We are in a crisis in terms of preparing the next workforce, and so we're very excited to be expanding. The last two pages talk about our Locust Grove facility, and that facility is on the future. It's approved, it's probably a three-year build-out, and we really need our locality partners to help us. That's part of the way that they're funded. We are expected to come up with about 10 percent, and I couldn't quite get those signals. So I was at green, I never was at yellow, but thank you very much for looking at that, and I hope you consider my suggestion. And I've talked to some of you about the need for additional funds, and we can discuss that at a different time.
Michelle Hedrick, followed by Rita Gerard, followed by Lisa Amor.
Good evening, honorable gentlemen of the Board, County Administrator, and staff. My name is Michelle Hedrick, and I am a resident of Spotsylvania County, Lee's Hill District, and the Executive Director of Rappahannock Big Brothers Big Sisters. I want to thank you for your past support of $5,500. The Big Brothers Big Sisters Board of Directors was concerned this year at our proposed funding level of $3,000, as it is $2,500 less than in previous years. We understand that the county does have a priority for funding programs that meet basic, immediate needs, and funding for intervention. However, our prevention program is necessary as well, as demonstrated by the increase of $800,000 in funding to the Rappahannock Regional Jail. This past summer, I went to the jail with a team of volunteers from the Community Collaborative for Youth and Families, and I sat across the table from inmates and surveyed them about their life circumstances. When asked what would have helped them avoid incarceration, many of them said they wished they had had a mentor, or somebody who cared, or somebody who could show them the way. 85 percent of them reported adverse childhood experiences. This is the population that Big Brothers Big Sisters serves. Our mission is to serve children facing adversity. Local service providers have come together over this past year to learn more about the science, yes, science, of adverse childhood experiences, as we refer to them as ACES. Mary Washington Healthcare and the newly-created Be Well Council, along with the Community Collaborative for Youth and Families, is hosting a community workshop and town meeting in April about this important topic. 60 Minutes just did a segment on this topic. In recently published studies, it has been proven to be scientific fact that adverse experiences as a child fundamentally changes the structure of the brain and is a powerful predictor of physical and mental health problems as an adult. Therefore, it is becoming increasingly clear that the work we do with providing children with mentors isn't just nice and heartwarming. The latest research on childhood adversity reveals that the single most common factor for children to develop resilience is one stable, committed relationship with a caring adult. With our proven model of one-to-one mentoring, together we are able to make community change. We are able to help children navigate the challenges and adversity in their lives. Our work is simple, and yet it's deeply impactful. Our mentors model responsible behavior and encourage positive life choices and help children develop the protective factors and behavioral assets that they will need for productive life. We can re-script the lives of children. They do not have to be a product of their circumstances. Our community needs to have all children succeed because if they fail, as we can see from this year's proposed budget, there is a real dollar impact on our county with increased law enforcement, social services, and regional jail funding. And we are a prevention program that saves the county money and its residents in the long term. Our organization invests over $65,000 in the children of Spotsylvania County, and I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors reconsider the funding level for Big Brothers Big Sisters. And/or in light of this reduced funding level, I would ask board members and community members here and our neighbors to consider a donation to our organization through our website, rbbbs.org, to help us meet our budget in order that we can help providing children who have adversity with supportive mentors that will change their lives for the better forever. Thank you for your consideration.
Rita Gerard, followed by Lisa Amor, followed by Ann Klockner.
Good evening, Spotsylvania County Supervisors and Administration. My name is Rita Gerard, and I am the Executive Director of Mental Health America Fredericksburg, and a Spotsylvania County resident. Thank you for the opportunity for us to speak with you this evening. On behalf of the people that we serve, I want to thank you for your past support of our organization and for your proposed funding this year. Along with me tonight is Teresa Bowers. She's the Director of our Senior Visitors Program. And our Senior Visitors Program is probably the one that you're most familiar with. The clients that we serve are senior citizens. Most of them still live in their own homes, and they're often homebound because of physical disability or visual deficit. Most are socially isolated and have lost, many have lost their connection to their community. But the Senior Visitors Program provides a trained volunteer who makes a free, weekly, in-home visit for socialization and support services. Currently, we support 113 seniors, and 39 of those seniors are Spotsylvania County residents. Many of our senior clients who lack family and social support come to rely on their senior visitor. That senior visitor might be the only person that they talk to all week long. And they also come in and they'll give them someone to spend time with and help run errands. This supports the senior, and it helps the local economy of Spotsylvania, because then they can go out and buy stuff. So that's not in my script, but anyway. I can't emphasize enough the impact that this program has on the lives of seniors who were very lonely and disconnected from their community before enrollment in the Senior Visitor Program. The seniors that you represent and that we serve, thank you for your continued funding. I also want to take this time to thank you for your support in the proposed budget of our helpline and our suicide prevention education programs. Our helpline is another free program and another free service that we offer at Mental Health America Fredericksburg, and it can be used by anyone of any age who is seeking more information about mental health resources in our community. We maintain the only list of local licensed and certified mental health professionals in addition to local support groups and other mental health resources. Often, our staff is the very first person that a helpline caller will talk to and admit to them and talk to them about their depression, thoughts of suicide, their anxiety, and that their need and their request for help. This is critical when today we're seeing so much about mental health in the news these days. Our suicide prevention education program started in 2014 in Spotsylvania County High Schools in the ninth grade, where we taught the signs and symptoms of depression and suicide ideation to freshmen. We taught it for them to be able to see it in themselves and in their friends, and more importantly, what to do about it, how to seek help. We've been able to expand that program to include the seventh and the ninth grades, both in Spotsylvania and in Fredericksburg, and we're getting ready to move into Stafford. We teach kids that suicide is not the normal response to stress. We teach them an acronym, ACT, Acknowledge, Care, Tell. We teach them that it's okay to say to one of their friends, you know, I'm concerned about you. Have you been thinking of hurting yourself? Because I care about you and I want to help. And it's okay to say, I'm concerned about me and I need help. We teach them that they should tell a trusted adult and not try to handle those situations on their own. We know that when we change minds, we change and we can save lives by preventing the mental health resources that are needed. And so we want to thank you for helping to make Spotsylvania a county where residents are receiving the mental health resources that they need. And thank you for your support of Mental Health America Fredericksburg.
Lisa Amor, followed by Ann Klockner, followed by Todd Rumpf.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Amor, and I live, work, and vote in the Lee Hill District. Tonight, I'm going to speak on behalf of the children of Spotsylvania County and what we as adults have the obligation to provide for them. Our children deserve to be college and career-ready by the time they graduate. Our children need to be competitive in order to assure success. Our children deserve an equitable education through differentiated instruction and special programs to meet their needs. These programs include special education, ESOL, speech, music, occupational, and physical therapy, gifted education, governor's school, the IB program, reading and math support. Every child deserves to have their needs met. Our children deserve to feel safe and secure in schools. They need to be able to focus on learning and not violence. Our children deserve access to basic supplies and the most up-to-date educational materials and equipment. Never should it be said that lack of any of these prevented a child from reaching their full potential. Our children deserve safe and reliable transportation to and from school, including after-school activities. We need to get these kids to school in order to teach them. Our children deserve to learn in classrooms with a low student-teacher ratio. Overcrowded schools and classes prevent our children from reaching optimum success. Our children deserve access to mental health and social work professionals. This is essential in today's changing society. Our children deserve buildings that are in good repair. Our schools are getting old and they need to be fixed and modernized. Our children deserve affordable and nutritious meals because no one can learn if they are hungry. Our children deserve a top-quality education delivered by top-quality educators. This means- This means fair and competitive salaries to attract and retain valued personnel. Yes, I do understand this all takes money, but it is up to you gentlemen to have the desire to finance this money. You have the ability to set the tax rate so that our schools, as well as our fire and sheriff's departments, be fully funded. Please give our kids and community what they deserve. I leave you with the wise words of Benjamin Franklin, and he said, "The only thing more expensive than education is ignorance." Thank you so much.
Ann Klockner, followed by Todd Rumpf, followed by Athena Jackson.
Good evening. I'm the Executive Director at Legal Aid Works, and we've been serving Spotsylvania County since 1973. I thank you sincerely for your prior support. We're asking for level funding. We understand all too well the tough times that are tightening all budgets. Our four full-time attorneys and one part-time attorney in our Fredericksburg office cover five counties and 15 courts. We represent low-income people who need an attorney in civil legal matters. We represent victims of domestic violence. We help people get unemployment benefits that have been illegally denied, and we help resolve landlord-tenant and foreclosure matters. We're the only agency providing this service. In your county, there are 10,726 eligible low-income persons who would qualify for the services of our five lawyers. As an outside agency, we behave like an inside agency by helping county governments in three important ways. We take the strain off your social services safety net by lifting clients out of poverty with enforceable court orders of child and spousal support, as well as unemployment benefits that the clients would not otherwise have won without our legal intervention. We help the county court system run efficiently by helping those who can't afford an attorney, those who represent themselves slow the system down considerably. And we aid law enforcement and the Commonwealth's attorney by working with victims of violence to secure enforceable protective orders. We leverage your financial support to provide legal services that benefit your citizens. In the last fiscal year, 462 of your residents were assisted by our five attorneys, including several critical domestic violence cases. We obtained $139,000 in annualized child and spousal support and avoided $34,000 in unlawful fees, fines, and debts. When you total the amount of real, measurable financial help we give the residents of your county compared to the amount you give us, that's an excellent return on your wise investment. Your county's poor citizens received more than $173,964 in those enforceable court orders and avoided additional costs. In the last fiscal year, the three offices of our agency obtained nearly $1 million for our clients throughout the 17 counties we serve with just nine lawyers. I've brought brochures with me tonight that I'll leave here so that you can provide good constituent services by referring appropriate residents of this county to our office. When you start your meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, you're putting your money where your mouth is. When you say you're for justice for all and you support us, you're acting consistently with that pledge, and we very much appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Todd Rumpf, followed by Athena Jackson, followed by Megan Jackson.
Hi, my name is Todd Rumpf, and I live in the Lee Hill Voting District. There seems to be more and more talk in the community where citizens speak about how great things used to be. I agree. I often enjoyed hearing stories from my grandparents about a time when greater civility, knowledge, and care about the well-being of the community existed. In the past, people seem more likely to judge government spending based on facts and results, advocating for programs that made the community strong and well. Some supervisors and county residents place far too much weight on our tax rate and not enough on community needs. This increased emphasis on the tax rate has been seemingly used more as a crutch to avoid vigorous and honest debate on the services that are needed to meet citizens' expectations. In some respects, this would seem to demonstrate an indifference towards the community on one end, or blind ideological loyalties on the other. Both pose existential threats to responsible governing and harm the quality of life of the community. To be clear, there is nothing improper or dishonorable with challenging new expenditures or reevaluating old ones, but the line between investigating and persecuting is a fine one, and too often, citizens have been observed to be stepping over it. Likewise, in too many cases, substantive debates, even within this board, do not take place, at least not in public. In public, Spotsylvania citizens are treated to words of support for education, fire and rescue, and social services, but are forced to continue to plead at three-minute intervals each budget cycle to encourage this board to move at a steadier pace towards meeting service markers. I would prefer to keep the equalized tax rate, but that would require providing a level of service incapable of keeping pace with the needs of our growing population. It would compound growing concerns among multiple county departments, including the schools, that county employees are departing to seek greener pastures in other localities. This effect probably will not become widespread under your leadership, but will ultimately fall to the next generation to make the tough choices that you're unwilling or lack the vision to make. Personally, I don't know how our county employees continue working with the knowledge that their peers are getting compensated more for doing the same job in roughly the same job market. I'm inspired by their dedication and loyalty, and I hope your political courage in the coming week honors that loyalty when making decisions that affect the future of this great county.
Athena Jackson, followed by Megan Jackson, followed by Pamela Pell.
I don't know how to move this. Someone help me?
They told us to do this when I was a kid.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, my name is Athena Jackson, and I live in the Lee Hill District. My reasons for speaking are I don't want to have to go to school and have to worry. Even though I'm a kid and I'm going up here, that still means that you have to listen to what I'm trying to say. I know my mom has gone up here and has said this many times, but still, we need at least one police officer at every school. Also, people should not be able to come to any school with a big bag. That is just mind-blind. They could have anything in that bag. That is just unacceptable. I also want students to take all of our drills very seriously. One day, it could be real. Also, if any of you out here tonight have kids, you should tell them this. If you see any kids getting bullied or does not look like they have friends, speak up for them, because those are usually the kind of people who come back and shoot up the schools. Here's my motto: Treat others how you want to be treated. Have a good night, and I hope this will make a difference.
Megan Jackson, followed by Pamela Pell, followed by Courtney Howell.
First, I just want to say, my daughter's awesome. Good evening. My name is Megan Jackson, and I live in the Lee Hill District. Again, I'd like to address school safety, and I thank you all for all the discussion regarding this matter recently. The first question I want to answer from Tuesday's meeting is why SROs now? For me personally, it became necessary the day Thornburg Middle received a gun threat. Plain and simple, it got way too real. Like we all do, I told myself this would never happen in my town, and I didn't find that fire inside me until my child's life suddenly became a gamble. Having said that, I want to make sure my vision is clear. The two most important changes to school safety are the additional SROs and the hiring of staff dedicated to mental health. Other than greeting people, SRO duties could include bag checking, because I think we should be doing this, monitoring deliveries, and monitoring cameras. Mental health professionals will focus on people connection, building trust, and positive reinforcement. These components go hand-in-hand, both of them working together, exhibiting proactive and reactive solutions. It cannot be one or the other. I'm not sure which 120 positions are sought after, but I can assume that quite a few would be fulfilling the mental health crisis, adding more counselors, social workers, and psychologists. You've talked about compromise, and I believe the best one would be making cuts somewhere else. If you can fully fund fire, rescue, and the sheriff's department, you can fully fund the schools. Teachers have one of the most difficult but important jobs out there. They are educating the future. Why should they have to take another hit? Instead of only focusing on what they get underpaid to do, they assume many other roles because they lack the extra hands that are so badly needed. And in today's society, they even assume the potential role of becoming a human shield. To have that as a job requirement clearly deserves respect and proper compensation. You mentioned options other than county deputies. Well, I did the research for you. I sent you all a very detailed email, including cost, on two local security companies. And just to clarify, the reason people are skeptical is because we want them held to the same prestigious standards as Spotsylvania deputies. It's a matter of knowing exactly the kind of people we are allowing into our schools. I want to close up by saying this: We have a huge responsibility as parents. Preventing bullying and tragic acts of violence does not solely rely on teachers, officers, or counselors. We as parents are a part of the problem, however, we are an even bigger part of the solution. It starts with us, so lead by example. Open your eyes and pay attention. Get involved in your child's life. Show them love and kindness, and teach them empathy and respect. That will shape their future, and that will shape who they become. Thank you.
Pamela Pell, followed by Courtney Howell, followed by Justin Langridge.
Good evening. My name is Pam Pell, Berkeley District Representative II and Chairman of the Department of Social Services Advisory Board. On behalf of the Advisory Board, I would like to acknowledge that this is National Social Workers Month, and I would like to first express my appreciation for all of the efforts performed nonstop by our Spotsylvania Department of Social Services employees. I would also like to express my appreciation for the support the Board of Supervisors has given to both the Department of Social Services and our community-based partners who provide human services programs and supports in Spotsylvania. The needs in the community requiring a response from social services have grown significantly over the years, and you, as a board, have provided resources to assist in meeting those demands. There has been a partnership between the hard work of the agency and allocation of resources by the board. I do not believe many people would hesitate in acknowledging how important the basic assistance programs of Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, Medicaid, TANF, and many other programs are to citizens residing in each of your districts. There is no disagreement on the vital work the agency does in child and family services, stabilizing families, and helping them achieve safe and nurturing homes, protecting our children and our elderly from abuse and neglect. This work is hard and almost always stressful. The agency faces continuing challenges in carrying out its mission, year after year increases in workload in the core functions of the agency, rising levels of significant substance abuse in the community, changing policies and regulations. Over the past several years, the Advisory Board has actively engaged in discussion with the Spotsylvania's Finance Office and representatives of neighboring localities to support an informed and coordinated approach to funding community-based agencies that both recognize the population served by the majority of the agencies across jurisdictional lines, yet still acknowledge that priorities and resources may differ from locality to locality. The DSS Advisory Board has always been committed to ensuring that the taxpayer dollars that are being allocated to the community-based agencies are both appropriately used and have a measurable impact in the community. But requests and needs exceed resources, and over the last five-plus years, that gap has grown appreciably. The board identified areas of priority for the government's support: Agencies and services that address basic shelter, basic sustenance, and/or essential safety, which includes injury, health, and mental illness. Essential safety means there is an imminent risk to the population being served in the absence of that program or service. The board also identified the target populations to be served as at-risk children, the elderly, and the intellectually and/or physically disabled. Based on these two elements of essential services and target populations, the board utilized a weighted matrix, a matrix used and shared by our neighboring localities. The applications were reviewed by each individual board member, then by the full board. Discussions were conducted over several meetings over several weeks. Questions were asked of and replied to by some of the applicant agencies. In the end, several agencies were recommended for changes in funding, some decreases, some increases, to reflect prioritization, impact to individuals being served, impact to the community at large, and also the agency's availability to other resources. An agency's history of past county funding, while noted, was not a determining factor for this year's recommendation. The Advisory Board is confident the process was fair and allowed the limited resources for human services agencies to be most appropriately allocated. Spotsylvania can be a community where citizens, young and old, regardless of income, have basic needs of food, shelter, and safety recognized and addressed, where opportunities to grow are accessible and effectual. This is what the DSS Agency, the county organization, the partnership with many wonderful community-based human services agencies seeks to accomplish. The Advisory Board thanks the Board of Supervisors for each step we take toward that accomplishment.
Courtney Howell, followed by Justin Langridge, followed by Dawn Napper.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name is Courtney Howell, and I am a parent of two in the Cortlande District, both of which attend Chancellor Elementary, who was just nominated this year as a Blue Ribbons My son has special needs, and these drive my passion for special education. Therefore, I'm here to speak to the increase in student demographics and additional resources necessary to accommodate our children's needs. As a parent and advocate of special education in our public schools, I implore you to please consider funding additional special education and related service teaching positions, specifically positions that I ask you to consider: The two occupational therapists, the two speech-language pathologists, the 12 paraeducators, the four ECSE teachers, the teacher at Gateway, the adaptive PE, the signing assistant, the teacher at Courthouse Academy, the one gifted resource teacher, the five social workers, and three counselors. My son thrives because Spotsylvania provides these supports for him, but I know we can do better. The addition of speech and occupational therapists will help to relieve the already strained schedules they have by reducing the number of schools they support. My son's therapist currently serves multiple schools, so if he has an unplanned absence, they do their best to try to make it up. Under this budget provided to you by our superintendent, the addition of four ECSE classrooms are funded to meet the increasingly stricter standards required by state and federal laws. The adaptive PE position will allow those with different abilities to gain the necessary physical skills for a lifetime of recreation and physical fitness and wellness. The signing assistant will continue to grow the school's ability to serve students who are deaf and need interpretation services. Imagine not being able to communicate. With 50 additional students identified as having autism this year, surely you can see why we need the addition of two paraeducators and one teacher at our Gateway Academy. Gateway Academy is unique to our county in that not many school districts are able to afford day support programs with a modified curriculum. Instead, those students are sent to other districts and private schools, some as far as Richmond and Charlottesville, but we can keep our students here, so they don't have the two-hour commute. Please help us continue to fund programs like this. Our children are our future, and our special needs populations deserve the same liberties we all have. Remember, the purpose of IDEA is to ensure that all children with disabilities have available to them a free and appropriate public education that emphasizes special education and related services, that are designed to meet their unique needs and prepare them for further education, employment, and independent living. So please help us prepare our children for further education, employment, and independent living. Thank you for your time tonight.
Justin Langridge, followed by Dawn Napper, followed by Tamara Quick.
Good evening, Justin Langridge. I'm speaking tonight as President of the Spotsylvania County Professional Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 3886. We're located at 9835 Courthouse Road, and I'm a voter in the Lee Hill District. Gentlemen, I hope you'll appreciate what I have to say tonight. My ask is ultimately for future budget cycles, and I'll also be the only speaker for our organization this evening. Some of this has been catch-up. Over the last several years, the board has taken many steps to bolster fire and EMS services in Spotsylvania, and we thank you. Sitting members of this board began bringing on staff to provide 24/7 coverage, and you're currently working on steps within the F- and you're currently working on steps within the FY19 budget to finally deliver full 24/7 ALS career baseline staffing in all of the county's 11 stations. Residents tonight should thank you. You've opened Fire Station 11 near the VRE, supporting a previously underserved area, and are providing coverage for development at New Post. You've invested millions on trucks and equipment. Safety-wise, with your support, the fire chief, citizens, and county staff, our members have been provided with improved industrial hygiene practices, including diesel-admission exhaust systems, a second set of supplied turnout gear to allow for proper decontamination after incidents, and, while maybe still not perfect, an updated radio system backbone with greatly enhanced coverage and building penetration. Jane, wherever you are, thank you. Safety-wise... I'm sorry. Where we failed is the area of compensation. Frankly, the Evergreen Study conducted for county employees missed the mark. Further attempts by county staff to work within budget constraints and ensure that everybody got an equal piece of the pie only seems to have compounded the study's oversights. Fire service positions comprise four of the top five positions furthest below market, including firefighter medics, who are 24.6% below market. This same position, with four years of service, received the smallest compensation adjustment possible, just 1.3%, the same raise given to all county employees with at least a year on the job. What was the point of the pay study? ALS-certified officers are no longer being compensated for their advanced training, and a lieutenant with 12 years in the department makes minimum starting salary for their position, while a lieutenant both hired and promoted two years behind the other is making 13% more, further worsening issues of compression. It's recognized that most of the FY19 budget has already been finalized. You all have already selected your budget priorities, and tonight is somewhat of a formality. However, as one year closes, it's not long before planning on another begins. And our ask of you tonight is this: As you direct county staff, please make compensation corrections a priority now for next year's FY20 budget process. Another pay study is not needed. The solutions are clear, the data is accessible, and our organization is happy to make suggestions or assist in any way possible. Our members don't expect to get rich doing what they do. They don't want or need Fairfax salaries. They do need to be compensated competitively, equitably, and to see a clear path through their advertised salary ranges. You've made wise investments in our fire and EMS system. Please help protect it by investing in your staff. Make them a top priority for your FY20 budget planning. Gentlemen, you have a ton of budget priorities. You all work very hard to keep our tax rate low in Spotsylvania and serve the citizens. Don't envy what you all have to do. Please keep this need in mind for next year's FY20 planning process. Mary, Bonnie, thank you for everything that you all do, and thank you. Have a good night.
Dawn Napper, followed by Tamra Quick, followed by Peter Fotenhauer.
Gentlemen, all decisions made by this Board impact every citizen of our county. Sorry, still short. I often think that some of you may have forgotten this important fact. You are so busy pushing your own political agenda, you have forgotten what your job truly is. The citizens of this county deserve a fully funded budget. We deserve the additional advanced life units that our EMS need to provide for our proper services for our large county and growing population that you have found the funds for. We deserve the new sheriff's deputies that will be cut. We deserve the new education positions. We deserve SROs in every school to protect our children. The school employees deserve to have the Evergreen Study implemented, just as the county employees did. Enough of cutting the budgets of every department and saying, "If it was so important, the money would be found." It is time you did your job and looked out for the welfare of the citizens of this county.
Tamra Quick, followed by Peter Fotenhauer, followed by Julie Lovell.
Good evening. My name is Tamra Quick, and I live in the Livingston District. I'm a taxpayer, a voter, and a parent. I'm here today asking Mr. Bitten and the other supervisors to vote to keep the tax rate the same it is now, at the 85 cents per $100 of assessed value. This would allow for fully funded budgets and hopefully, possibly hopefully, extra student resources officer to provide a safer environment for our children. Don't our children deserve this? My major concern is education, and ensuring Dr. Baker's request are fully funded. I would add that Dr. Baker's budget does not go nearly far enough to provide for our children, the teachers that are needed, the teacher training, and the programs that are needed. Students are being denied services, whether it's special education, the needs of the gifted, and all students. I ask that Dr. Baker and my representatives, Mr. Twig and Mr. Bitten, come together with other supervisors and other school board representatives and work to make our schools better for our kids. Don't our children deserve this? The goal should be to bring the state... To bring the funding to the per-pupil state average. This may involve Dr. Baker and his staff, working with elected officials. This may mean teachers, parents, taxpayers, all coming together. This may mean, as I've been told more than once, to come to the table with an open mind, open ears, and a closed mouth. I'm new to the county. I'm new to how all this works. But all I know is the constant infighting and worrying about personal and political interests is harming our children, and don't our children deserve better? I have four children in Spotsylvania schools, except one is homeschooled because the elementary school could not provide for her needs. One will go to private school next year because the schools could not provide for his needs with a learning disability. He has dyslexia that affects one in five, so 4,000 to 5,000 students, and they could not provide for him. I have another child in middle school who may have to be homeschooled next year because the middle school does not have a full-time gifted resource teacher, and she's unchallenged and having issues. I moved here from Alabama with the second-worst educational system in the nation. I moved here for better schools and a more progressive environment. And what I'm finding is infighting, casting blame, calling names, and not working together for our children, and don't our children deserve better? Our children are worth just as much as the children in Northern Virginia, as the children in Richmond, and as the children across the state. They deserve the same per-pupil spend, which will require additional local funding. They deserve the same quality of education. My hope is this time next year, you will all work together to make that happen, because our children deserve better. I encourage you to keep the tax rate as it is, so all departments could be fully funded by their request. Mr. Bitten, you said you wanted to see a surplus available if funding needs to be there for additional schools, so I hope you will keep the tax rate the same. It comes to about $120.
Peter Fotenhauer. Julie Lovell, followed by Donald Robinson, followed by LeAnn Kemp.
Hello, my name is Julie Lovell. I've been a teacher with Spotsylvania Schools for 19 years. I'd like to share with you how my day started. I arrived at school 30 minutes early so my daughter could get some extra help in math. I was going to use this time to catch up on grading, emails, general organization, but instead, I spent my extra time sweeping my classroom, which happens to be a gym, because our custodial staff was shorthanded and it needed to be done. This is what teachers do. We get the job done and go on with our day. I share this with you because I currently have 226 students on my roll. With directed study, I am directly responsible for 246 students. This responsibility includes meaningful student interaction and building relationships, student safety, parent contact, discipline when needed, lesson planning, grading, athletic duties, meetings, school-level committees, county-level committees, and daily duties, just to name a few. And let's not forget the extra time to add to my toolbox, improve on best practices, attend seminars and classes to improve in my chosen profession, and maintain my state licensure. Teachers are sometimes bashed because we have summers off, but much of our professional learning takes place over the summer. There just aren't enough hours in the day to do the extra teacher stuff, which we all know really isn't extra stuff. And I'm not alone. This describes the career and lives of teachers. But the big debate I'm hearing is the competing resources for schools and public safety. School safety and public safety are very important. We discuss and practice safety regularly with our kids: fire drills, weather drills, intruder drills. And staff at every school have an action plan for many scenarios that nobody wants to think about. They... Sorry, I lost my place. We... Schools... I'm sorry. We have wonderful SROs in our schools, and they're included in these drills in our daily lives. They build relationships of trust with students, and they're part of our school families. They build... All schools should have SROs, but the cost did not fall on the schools. They are not SCPS employees. They are employed by the Sheriff's Office. School safety is a multifaceted issue, and SROs are not the only answer to the problems within a building. We should also be discussing mental health and social services within our schools. When the budget was slashed years ago, we had to sacrifice counselors, and those positions have never been given back to us. At my school, we have two counselors and 900 middle school students. This is unacceptable, but again, we make do with what we have to get the job done. The Evergreen Study was done to have actual data on what many of us already knew. Teachers, fire, rescue, and sheriff's department are understaffed and underpaid. The county paid for this study. It doesn't seem to be following their recommendations. At this point, teachers and public safety employees should be benefiting from their findings. However, there is again discussion of pushing back raises and filling positions because of other priorities. Teachers work very hard. The raises we're asking for are not outrageous and have been pushed back for too long. We have still not rebounded from the massive cuts and loss and step increases from 10 years ago. Many teachers are asking...
Ma'am, your time has expired. I'm sorry.
Donald Robinson, followed by LeAnn Kemp, followed by Mary Lee Carter.
Good afternoon, committee. How are y'all doing this evening? My name is Donald Robinson. I work currently at Naval District Washington, NDW. I work out of Darwin. We also work in Maryland, Indian Head, and the whole region as a police officer. I'm a sergeant supervisor at night. That's my first job. My second job and passion, well, not really a job, something I love to do, is I'm the executive director of the Teen Enrichment Network here in the Spotsylvania County, in conjunction with Spotsylvania County Schools. And what we've done is we have summits twice a year to celebrate teens. Now, follow where I'm going. To celebrate teens with what they do in the school system, helping them move forward from middle school, high school, and on to college. Well, since we've done that, myself and a lot of our committee members in the back, along with Dr. Baker and, like I say, Spotsylvania County Schools, we've started a mentor program that we've done... We've been in Spotsylvania County schools, going to different schools since October, every Thursday mentoring, talking to kids. And what I'm here to talk to you about is this. I got to piggyback a little bit of what she was talking about here in a minute. The teachers, I'm in there every Thursday. I'm at Spotsylvania County High School every Thursday at 10:30, after I work 12 hours. And the work 12 hours don't bother me. But I see these teachers. They're tireder than I am. They don't have the resources. They work with kids after school. They work with different programs that are sponsored. I've talked to some teachers. "What are you going to do when you leave here today?" "Well, I got bus duty." And after I have bus duty, I have to work for the football team. I have to stay there and help sponsor them. And I got another one. "We're going to work with some special needs kids, 8 o'clock." "What time are you going to get home?" "I'm going to get home at 10 o'clock." Well, when I come into the building sometime dressed like this, or when I go in different places, people go, "Thank you for your service." Some people say, "Thank you for your service. Thank you for what you do." But if you think back for a minute, if all of us in this room can think back for a minute, when we were little, and you thought about your teacher, okay? Back in the '70s, '60s, some of us, '80s, whatever the case may be, it was a little respect there. Today, the kids... I'm in the schools every Thursday, different schools. And I was here Wednesday. They don't respect the teachers. And the reason being is, when we come in and talk to them, we're not teachers, and they just want somebody to listen, to care, somebody to listen to them. But when we were younger, I would go to school, my teacher would give me a hug. My teacher wasn't under duress back in the day. They weren't scared. They don't need cola like now. We want to arm teachers. They're arming us. We want to arm teachers. Some lawmakers want to do that, really? They didn't sign up for that. They sign up to teach, but now they come into what we have today, and it's like a war zone. And in my situation, we're taught active shooters, and I'm also mentoring and trying to run this program, right? One day, on our bases or somewhere, I might have to shoot one of our kids. You ever think about that? So, I mean, we got to look at this. A woman carries a child for nine months. They're the most precious thing in the world. And what we... Don't smoke around her. Make sure she's healthy. We treat them like golden when they're in a womb. Then they come out. Where's the attention? What is the first major thing? I'll never forget my little girl when she wanted to go to school. She ran out the door to go to the bus. She ran. She wanted to go to school excited. Kids get to high school, now they're scared. A little girl talked to me yesterday at this school. She talked to me about, "I can't be here next week, Mr. Robinson, after spring break because it's the anniversary of my father's suicide." Since October, I've talked to at least a dozen kids who've talked about suicide, parent suicide, how lonely they are. They have nobody to talk to. We need to take care of our teachers. We really need to take care of our teachers. They're the first line of defense. Like when I was in the Marine Corps, what is it? You're on the line, the first line. First line of defense for these children, when they come out of the house of being parented, be it good or bad, is school. And they're around teachers. So I just want to leave you with that. Y'all have a nice day.
LeAnn Kemp, followed by Mary Lee Carter, followed by Russ Mueller.
Hi, good morning, gentlemen, or good afternoon, evening. I'm a teacher, so I don't know. Good morning, or good evening. Good evening, members of our community. And also, I want to say good evening to the awesome, amazing administration and teachers that are here from Spotsylvania County Schools. Hate to say I'm one of them, but I am one of them. But I come to you as a parent of three children that attend Spotsy schools, as well as I'm an early childhood special education teacher. I don't know if you can tell by the sass, but I am. But I have entrusted my children's present and future in the school system. I moved here from... We moved from Arkansas to Georgia to here. I'm a Virginia native, so we love it. But it's just a fabulous school district. One of my personal children has special needs. My husband and I have been thrilled with the education she has gotten while here in Spotsy. Her teachers not only care about her educational success, but hers as an individual and her overall happiness. This happiness is directly correlated with her educational success, despite her ability to learn in different ways. The staff of Student Support Services are to thank for that. There are special education teachers. My daughter, who has special needs, is in middle school. She has had an amazing experience with Spotsy, and I thank them for that, but I also thank you for that. You have funded them. You have given them resources, and I appreciate that. But I want to ensure that we continue to give them resources to provide our children, not just special needs across the board, with the need and extra help and support to make it through their school-aged years. These ladies and gentlemen make a critical impact to all of our beautifully special children from pre-K, yay yay, through high school. I beg of you to give them the resources to continue their great work. As we all know, the needs of our students grow from year to year, as well as the overall number of students who need assistance and the Office of Student Support Services serve. It is imperative that we add staff and resources to provide the support that our children need and deserve. Please find it in your hearts and budget to give the resources to the fabulous Office of Student Support Services, make their journey a tiny bit easier to serve the amazing children of Spotsylvania. Thank you for your time.
Mary Lee Carter, followed by Russ Mueller, followed by Anthony LaFaro.
Mary Lee Carter, Lee Hill District. Thank you all for the opportunity to be out tonight. It's not a plea. It's appreciation. And I want to say that to you, as well as to the school board. Follow me along, and I want to show you what happens in life in Spotsylvania County. I had an opportunity to sit at Parkside Elementary School many times in a rocking chair, and I watched the students come out in wheelchairs and in walkers, and they were all smiling. I said, "Oh, boy, this is wonderful. Why are they all smiling?" Then here comes the teachers and the aides, and they were smiling. That's why those kids were smiling, and it was just wonderful. Then I had... I'm with a student who has an IEP at this time. Then I had, I'm with a student who has an IEP at this time and of course, they were in Battlefield Elementary, I mean, Middle School. And there, she was freezing. She was freezing. And so, "Why? Why? What's wrong?" And she felt like that everybody was looking at her because she was an IEP student. And so therefore, the administration and the representative from Lee Hill District at that time, we all sit down at the table and we made her feel important, but they were the ones who was behind it and you were behind it because you had funded their positions that they needed. And then, what happens? They are now in Massaponix High School and I want to show you the outcome of what you've done. That student was talking about, "I don't want to go to school. I want to quit." They were stressed. They were disturbed. I thought, "Oh, my goodness, what's going to happen? Please, let's get this child on the right road." You know, kids become stressed out, just like we do. But however, here at Massaponix, they have worked with this student and guess what? That student is not talking. "I don't want to go to school anymore. I'm ready to go to school and I will graduate at a certain year." Isn't that wonderful? Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. They are important. They matter and so do you and thank you for your service.[694.73][694.73](APPLAUSE)
Russ Mueller, followed by Anthony LaFaro, followed by Jeanne Bergeron.
Good evening. My name is Russ Mueller and I'm a resident of Fawn Lake. My statement deals with what may soon become a major short and long-term budget issue for the county. That is, the world's 12th largest solar plant. That will be the first on the East Coast and the size of Fredericksburg, my new neighbor. Time will not allow me to go into the detail of our cost-benefit analysis of this 6,350-acre power monstrosity, six times the footprint of the nuclear power plant at Lake Anna. Let me jump to the bottom line. The estimated revenue increase may be dwarfed by the loss of revenue. If the risks that we have identified and supplied to the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, and so forth, come to fruition, it's not a matter of if in some cases, it's a matter of when. Now, if I have time, I'll go into an example, but I'm also a respondent to this case in Richmond. And I filed my direct testimony and I hope each of you, when you're supplied that, will give it close consideration. But what I want to do here tonight is to request that this, each, that this Board of Supervisors assert its jurisdiction, assert its primary interest in the citizens of Spotsylvania County, particularly those surrounding this monstrosity, and to do no harm. How? I am asking the Board of Supervisors to write a letter to the SCC requesting that that license, if they issue it, be conditioned on your prior approval of any special use permit that you might consider here. You need the upper hand. These are risks to our people. They're not small. I don't know how much time I have, but just one issue is water. A third of a billion gallons are coming out of our local aquifer.
Sir, your time has expired.
Hopefully you'll look at that document and study it closely.
Anthony LaFaro, followed by Jeanne Bergeron, followed by Larry Plating.
Thank you. Anthony LaFaro, Chancellor District. I'm here to advocate for fully funding both the schools and the sheriff's requested budgets. The topic of more SROs that got brought up recently, I think that's significant and important. While my background is primarily in business, when I was in the service, I was in security forces for the Air Force. I cannot emphasize enough how important it is, when you have security personnel, to have them be properly trained and prepared. Third-party security contractors do not always do that. We need for our sheriff to, who is an elected official, who is responsible for the safety of this county, including the schools, to be able to be the person in charge of the hiring process, the screening process, including background checks, the training process, and the continued training process. I don't trust that to a lot of third-party security contractors. You know, I think we're all familiar with a certain, let's just say, primary candidate for delegate that worked for a third-party security contractor, okay? Wound up suing the Pentagon because he said he got PTSD off an argument. Those aren't the kind of people we need securing our children, okay? And SROs can play a bigger role beyond just being there for the purposes of security, too. The fact that in this past Tuesday's meeting, when funding for that came up, it immediately seemed that several board members seemed to want to throw it under the school board budget. Well, I vote for the school board based on their knowledge and ability to oversee education, not security, not law enforcement. So I prefer that to be under the sheriff's budget the way it is now. And furthermore, I don't think we should be choosing between the security of our children and the quality of education of our children, nor should we be trying to sway away from funding the Evergreen Study to the same level we did for the county side. These are reasonable requests. If we can do it while maintaining the same tax rate, I understand it will be equalized. But you know, I planned when I moved and I planned financially, I invest properly. I understood. I prepared for the fact that when my home would go up in value, because everything else goes up in value generally and costs go up, that one day my taxes might a little bit too because of that. All right? I understand people hit hard times and not everybody has that luxury, but I don't make a lot of money. I make about half of what I used to before I became disabled. All right? But I was prepared and I understand not everybody has those advantages. But I think our requests are reasonable and SROs over third-party are a much bigger advantage. There really shouldn't be a four to three or five to one, anything like that. This should be a seven to nothing vote to fully fund the requests.[1073.58][1073.58](APPLAUSE)
Jeanne Bergeron, followed by Larry Plating, followed by Preston Schlenkofer.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies, public that have come. My name is Jeanne Bergeron. I vote in the Battlefield District and I'm also the Spotsylvania Education Association President. I'm not here to preach to you tonight, but I do want to encourage you to keep the tax rate at the current rate of 85 cents. We need to fully fund one Spotsylvania. We need to take each part of the county's structure, including public safety and schools, and fund it in order to support our community. All of these services revolve around each other. Schools teach the students that will become employed in this county. Public safety ensures the safety and security of the schools. We must fund all our services in this county to allow for education, safety, and security of all county residents. As our clapper said, fully fund one Spotsylvania. Thank you.[1145.65][1145.65](APPLAUSE)
Larry Plating, followed by Preston Schlenkofer, followed by Andy Swope.
Thank you. My name is Larry Plating. I live in the Cortlandt District. I am one of those senior citizens who live on a fixed pension and am concerned about the tax rate. I thank you for trying to keep it as low as possible. I have no children in the school system, but I am concerned citizen with a strong interest in education. I just finished 10 years volunteering as a headmaster and teacher to a faith-based homeschool cooperative where no one was left behind. I'd first like to quote from Webster's 1828 Dictionary, the first American definition of the discipline called "education," written by one of its founding educators, none other than Noah Webster himself. "Education, noun, Latin, educatio. The bringing up, as of a child, instruction, formation of manners. Education comprehends all that series of instruction and discipline which is intended to enlighten the understanding, correct the temper, and form the manners and habits of youth, and fit them for usefulness in their future stations. To give children a good education in manners, arts, and sciences is important. To give them a religious education is indispensable. And an immense responsibility rests on parents and guardians who neglect these duties." The etymology of the Latin word "educare" means to both pour in and to draw out, signifying that education is a two-way communication process. The definition clearly places the responsibility of education on the parents, who at this day and age have little input into the content of the curricula. Over the last past several years, the schools have become targets of those they educate. I would ask the school board and the teachers and administrators to do some self-examination. Please ponder this question. What are we teaching in our schools that lead our students to believe in a hopeless future? Does their curricula encourage them to be angry at the United States or government or the school system itself? Could it be curricula teaches the children they are mere accidents or animals, products of evolution? If you teach a child he is an animal, do you not expect him to act like an animal? I would suggest you teach the children that they have been made in the image of their Creator, God, and that He has placed them on this planet for a purpose. This is especially important for the fathers to understand. When writing the Virginia Constitution, July 4, 1776, Thomas Jefferson defined religion as "the duty we owe to our Creator," in that document. Why would Jefferson put in the Constitution that in the Constitution if he didn't expect it to be taught to our children? Students looked up to their teachers and administrators as role models.
Sir, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.[1348.65][1348.65](APPLAUSE)
Preston Schlenkofer, followed by Andy Swope, followed by Yvonne Pfeiffer.
Good evening. My name is Preston Schlenkofer. I'm a Spotsylvania resident and taxpayer and I will be speaking on behalf of the Fredericksburg Virginia Patriots this evening. The FY 2019 County Administrator's Draft Budget is 430 pages long, but has fewer pages than last year's. Efforts to reduce the size, scope, and cost of government is always appreciated. This year's current budget is 502 million and the FY 19 budget is estimated at 527 million, an increase of 24 million or 4.8%. 331 million or 63% of the total budget is slated for the Spotsylvania County Public Schools. I read online that someone believes that the reason we have a budget surplus in Spotsylvania is because the schools and county departments are underfunded. If that were the case, schools and county departments would be running deficits instead of, and instead of asking the school, the Board of Supervisors not to raise our taxes, we would be asking them to cut spending and someone else would be asking them to raise taxes. Increased revenues are generated from new home taxes, increased personal property tax revenue, an improved economy, cost savings resulting from a lapse or turnover of employees, health insurance savings for county employees, and fiscal-minded department heads and cost-conscious school and local employees. Thank you for your service, everybody. Property assessments are estimated to increase 7.7% in 2018. That equates to a $15,000 increase in the assessed value of a $200,000 home and will add approximately $120 more per year to the current property tax collected. Imagine if your home or land is assessed at $300,000 or $400,000 or more. Spotsylvania County had a budget surplus of $7 million in 2016, $12 million in 2017. That is a total of $19 million surplus. We won't know the amount of surplus for 2018 until July, but we know we will have one. The schools had a surplus of $1.3 million for 2017 and used it for unbudgeted purchases instead of returning it to the county to be used for immediate pay raises for special education or para-educator raises and for increases in pay for bus drivers and aides. The answer to why Dr. Baker and our local school board did not want to propose returning the money to the county and using it for immediate pay raises is still unknown. Don't hate property taxpayers who don't want to contribute more money to higher surpluses. No one likes to pay more than they have to for a home, for rent, a car, healthcare, or food. And to those who want to pay more, it's called individual charity and it's welcomed by those asking for and needing it. According to the county administrator, all the money of the schools and county needs is achieved at 82 cent property tax rate, taking into account the increase in property values for 2018. This is called the equalized rate. 82 cents is more than enough to fully fund the county's and therefore the school's budget and is slightly higher than the 81.5% or 81.5 cent rate proposed by the county administrator. The money is there. It's just up to the county administrator and our Board of Supervisors to determine how it is spent. It is out of the hands of the hard-working property and business owners and into the hands of our elected and appointed representatives. We trust you to make the best decisions for Spotsylvania taxpayers and residents. The members of the Fredericksburg Patriots, Fredericksburg, Virginia Patriots are not asking for a tax cut again this year. We are asking you not to raise taxes because there is no financial, logical, or common sense reason to do so. Thank you very much.[1648.36][1648.36](APPLAUSE)
Andy Swope, followed by Yvonne Pfeiffer, followed by Viv Barry.
Thank you. My name is Andy Swope. I live in the Battlefield District. Thank you to all you gentlemen up there, especially Mr. Yakubowski, my representative, for holding these sessions. I've lived in the community for 12 years and I've been coming to these hearings and watching them on TV for as long as I can remember. I've watched this conversation devolve into an us versus them. I guess it's easy to point a finger at another group and blame them for the situation we find ourselves in, but the blame belongs all around. I'm not a teacher. I don't work for the county. I'm a Marine Corps wife, a tax-paying citizen, and a parent of a Spotsylvania County school student. In 2017, I paid $2,082, $2,082 in property taxes on my home at the 85 cent rate with my new assessed value. This next fiscal year, I will pay $2,380, an increase of $297. And ensuring that we fully fund our schools and all services, I feel that $297 is worth every single penny that I am willing to pay. A study in 2012 showed that increased public school funding has a two-to-one effect, meaning for every additional dollar invested in schools, there was a turn on investment of $2 in additional future earnings by the student. That same study also showed that lower-income families were 10% more likely to graduate high school, had a 13% higher wages as adults, and were 10% less likely to live in poverty. Their family income increased by 17%. And when we increase per pupil spending by just 10%, we see 7% higher wages and 13% lower likelihood of adult poverty. Another group of research showed that increased spending led to higher graduation rates and therefore saw a large reduction in spending of social support programs like food stamps and Medicaid. Also, higher graduation rates correlate with lower incarceration rates. Less people incarcerated means less overall operation costs of jails, so we can pay a little more for education now or pay out for incarceration later. I send my daughter to school every day. As an eighth grader at Spotsy Middle, she interacts with seven different teachers, numerous administrators, bus drivers, and support staff. I'm a stay-at-home mom and these professionals and educators spend more time with my child on a daily basis than I do. I put my confidence in the care and guidance of smart, educated, concerned adults for eight hours a day. It's so easy to villainize teachers... It's so easy to villainize teachers and disrespect an entire profession. I mean, we all know after getting verbally bashed tonight, they're going to get up tomorrow morning and go back to work, dedicating 100% of themselves to their overcrowded classrooms that are filled with students with a myriad of needs. The studies and research has proven that it's time we start supporting our schools with the full weight of our budgets. It's time we start paying our educators and support staff a competitive wage. We are educating the next generation of thinkers, of doctors, military electricians, voters. We can invest in education now or suffer the consequences of an uninformed and undereducated population later. Thank you.
Yvonne Pfeiffer, followed by Viv Barry, followed by Nora Eldridge.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Pfeiffer. I'm a Spotsylvania County school bus driver. I have no children or grandchildren in Spotsylvania County schools, but I am responsible for the safety of the children who ride my bus every day. When I learned from a Fredericksburg News report that Spotsylvania Sheriff's Department was questioned about their need for more resource officers in the schools, I was outraged. There should be no question to how much we need to protect our children in our schools. The state of our nation proves this. The pleas of the children at the recent March of Our Lives speaks volumes to the mounting need for added safety in our schools. There should be no question when our Sheriff's Department asks for help in keeping our children and schools safe, the answer should be a resounding yes. Some of my colleagues said that I should stand up here this evening and ask for more money for our school bus drivers. I'm telling you here tonight that I would work for free as a school bus driver, just to make sure that the children in our schools were safe. Thank you.
Viv Barry, followed by Nora Eldridge, followed by Dale Swanson.
Thank you. Vivica Barry, Lee Hill. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, our supers and all of us. First of all, I wanted to say to please hold the line on taxes at the 82 cent rate. We're coming out of the Great Recession. We have lots of families in our communities who've been underemployed, who have higher expenses than they've had, who are still recovering from the $4-plus gallon tax on, not tax, but gas prices. I work with a community that's just barely getting back on their feet, living in motels, most of them, and that's the stop before the street, or they finally make their way into an apartment. Higher taxes means higher rents. Let's help everybody get up on their feet. And I heard, a good friend of mine was at Credit Com, which was last weekend in DC while the marches were going on, talking about money. So Americans, men, women, and children are carrying $12,000 in debt. That's just credit cards. Mortgages are debts. Car loans are debts. Student loans are debt. We need to get off of debt, and we do this by keeping taxes low. Secondly, I'm all for money to the schools, all for it, but giving $2 million more than what I think we're pretty much, or some of us are happy giving, is not going to get bullies out of the classroom. And until we are enforcing the student code of conduct, we have kids and teachers that are being emotionally and physically brutalized. My husband's a Marine. Perhaps there are other Marines here who know all about bar fights. It's the person who gets in the middle of the fight, who gets everything beaten out of them. So I'm pretty, I talked to a good friend of mine who just pulled his son out. I asked him why. He said his son was one of the bigger kids, and he was always getting into fights defending his friends. And his son was depressed, his grades were going down. He's homeschooling him now, and his kid's coming back. So a lot of us here, the board and myself, we're around the same age. When we went to school, bullies were pulled out of the classroom. They were not allowed to stay there and terrorize kids and teachers. So extra money isn't solving that if we don't have the guts to stand up for the student code of conduct to protect our kids and our teachers. Finally, please give more money to our firefighters and our police. I've had, you see these rescue wagons all over the place. One of them saved one of my neighbors a couple weeks ago, and they deserve it. Thank you.
Nora Eldridge, followed by Dale Swanson, followed by Debbie Wolf.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Nora Eldridge. I live in the Battlefield District. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for running a surplus, the very good work on your part. I'd also like you to keep the tax rate at 82%, hold 82 cents, excuse me, hold the line on that. The teachers are being paid at levels comparable to Fairfax. They are at market. They are not being underpaid, and I think that's great. I think that's terrific, because education is important, and it is expensive, but there is a time that you sort of have to stop and look at what everybody else is getting. And I think to give the deputies and the firefighters 1.3, that's an insult to what they do. You put on that uniform every day, and you have a target on your back, and they should be compensated. Instead of giving teachers 21% over three years, $21 million rather over three years, give it to the firefighters and give it to the deputies who are out there taking the bullets and the slings and the arrows. Not to say the teachers don't, because they have a tough job, and I do respect that, but they are getting paid very, very well. And also, please stop letting employees in the school district bring their children to our schools, tuition-free, getting education, taking spots that could be filled by Spotsylvania children. That is costing us over $1 million a year, and I really don't see a reason for it. If you have adequate schools where you live, send the kids there. And I'd also like to remind the board that a resolution happened passed that when someone is up here speaking, that comments and laughter from the office, from the audience is not supposed to be tolerated, and is supposed to be shut down. And I got laughed at, and you did nothing about it.
Dale Swanson, followed by Debbie Wolf, followed by Ann Ellis.
Good evening. My name is Dale Swanson, and I live in the Cortlandt Voting District, and I'm speaking as a taxpayer and lifelong resident of Spotsylvania County. I would like to thank some of the supervisors and Mr. Taylor for doing such a great job with the budget the past couple of years, so that we have a $12 million carryover. Property assessments are up, so even if you vote for the equalized rate, some of us, most of us are going to pay more, and some of us will pay a whole lot more. I would ask, why are we spending $1.2 million of county taxpayer monies on non-resident students of school employees? Not just teachers, any school employee. Is this not an unspoken and untaxed benefit to teachers and school employees? The school board is out of control, asking for $5 million more in recurring funds, yet they are borrowing nearly $5 million of CIP to install turf football fields in the high schools. The Evergreen Study states that our teachers are getting paid at market and above, and yet the runaway school board wants more money for 4% pay raise for teachers when our firefighters and the rescue workers are not getting that. Gentlemen, I ask that you do not cave into the pressure of the SEA. Mr. Marshall, you campaigned on conservative values and spoke to how poor the residents in the Berkeley District are. Voting for anything more than an equalized rate will hurt your constituents and runs contrary to your campaign promises. Make the school board get their priorities straight. Instead of astroturf, how about making our schools safer by securing their doors and entryways? Make our children's safety a priority. Resource officers is not the answer. We need to make our schools safe. How can you, any of you, justify a tax increase or a rate higher than an equalized rate when we had a $12 million surplus last year? This is our money. I ask you to do the hard work and hold the line. Vote for an equalized rate. Raising taxes is easy. All you have to do is hold a gun to our heads. Thank you.
Debbie Wolf, followed by Ann Ellis, followed by Christine Culberson.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Wolf, and I'm a resident at Lee's Hill. I am a citizen of the county. I work in the county as a teacher, and I am a parent of students that attend Spotsylvania County Schools. This year will make 26 years of teaching for me. I am very proud to say that I've made it this far. It's not been an easy road, but it's a road that I've been proud to be on. I don't want to take your time by going through different facts and different situations. I am in a profession that all of you have seen before. All of us have been in public education, or have worked with a teacher somewhere, and you know our jobs. I am asking that you please do what I ask my students to do, and that is to put safety first. We cannot have safety in our schools without more funding. Please support the 85 cent tax rate and allow the, all budgets of Spotsylvania County, all, for all of the law enforcement, and ambulance drivers, and firefighters, and education to do our jobs with safety first. Thank you.
Ann Ellis, followed by Christine Culberson, followed by Carol Anne Luter.
Good evening. My name is Ann Ellis. I live in the Livingston District. I am a citizen, a voter, a mother, and a teacher in Spotsylvania County. I have been teaching for 28 years in special education, and I am very proud of my job, and I'm proud of all of the students that I have touched. It's very rewarding when you're out shopping and you see a student, a former student, come up to you and say, "Thank you, Mrs. Ellis." My husband is also a teacher, and many of his older students would come back and say, "Mr. Ellis, you were correct. You were right." It's wonderful to be able to be in this position and touch and affect students in a positive way. I would like you to please fully fund the budget at the 85 cent tax rate for the schools, for the fire department, rescue, and the police force. Thank you.
Christine Culberson, followed by Carol Anne Luter, followed by Devine Mathis.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'd like to say good evening, especially to Mr. Marshall. I'm Christine Culberson from the Berkeley District. The last time I spoke to the board, it was a slightly older Mr. Marshall sitting in that seat, so I'm glad to be back here speaking to you all this evening. I would respectfully request that you all vote for the 85 cent tax rate. We have been cutting the budget and observing the budget very closely, and trying to be as cost-effective as we can be. At a certain point, cuts hurt. Now, you all mentioned this summer that you were talking about getting rid of the Marshall Building, because it's an older building, and it needs a lot of work, and you're concerned about those costs. What happens with an older school? We don't have the luxury of getting rid of it. We've put our kids in those buildings with 20-year-old carpet held down with duct tape and 38-year-old bleachers that fall off the wall, and we've put them in buses that have 200,000 miles on them. We do it because the school board does not have the funding from you to buy everything and fix everything that needs done with our older buildings and our older buses and our older supplies. We're trying. We make do every day in the school system, doing more with less, but at a certain point, we just need more. Our police need more. Our fire needs more. At a certain point, nobody wants to pay more, and I appreciate that. But a fixed budget is a constraint to where we need to go to help and serve those in this community. So if we need to raise the taxes a little bit, and we all need to pay a little bit more, we're not going to like it. I get that. But together, we can combine that money to make the fixes that need fixed, take care of our police and fire, so we don't train these folks and then lose them to other counties where they can make more money. Hire the extra teachers and support staff that we need to take care of all of our students.